Ma'am, we ask everyone to rise. This is Senator Peter Walker, Secretary of State. I have the flag for me.
Lord, we thank you. You know, you just assembled the way you are tonight. Thank you, Lord, for your blessings. It should be so honest. Blessed is the Lord as the council takes care of the city business. Lord, given the knowledge to know what to do and what not to do. All these voters, all we ask in our name for their sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor and Senator?
Here.
Counselor on the budget?
Here.
Counselor on the budgets?
Here.
Counselor on the nessberry?
Right.
Counselor on the dowry?
Right.
Madam President?
Here.
Court of Senators? Attorney General? Please. Alrighty. Approval of the minutes from November twenty first. Anybody have anything?
No, I haven't seen anything this month.
Do you have any just now?
Somebody want to make the motion then that we approve the events as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Jacob, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Alright, all those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, say, so ordered. November twenty third financial statements, John.
Income for the month. November was forty-two thousand, five hundred sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents with expenditures of fifty-six thousand, one twenty-six and forty-eight cents for a shortage of thirteen thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty cents for the month. The only item that really was out of the ordinary, you'll see under the vendor checks, Eric Jarrett, twenty-one seventy-five, two dollars, one hundred seventy-five dollars. That's the hands and heifers for the Thanksgiving dinner. Other than that, had to lay arms down a little bit, but we're also in that low period where nobody's really paying a lot of taxes right now, so. Still up for the year, a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars and eleven cents. There's any questions?
Any questions for John? If not, I'm going to take a motion that the man statement be approved as presented.
I make motion.
Anybody made a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, say, so ordered. Okay, whole business. First of all, nominated winning bid for the engineering firm. We did speak to four engineering firms. The four engineering firms were trying. We also had New River Engineering. We had Potesta and we had.
What do you remember?
Thrasher.
Thrasher.
Yeah, Thrasher. Sitting there thinking thirty things here. Thrasher. And so I think after all the kind of presentations by them and everything, I think we felt that Thrasher was the better engineering at preparation, presentation and everything. So what's the council, what would you all like to do? Who would you like to select as your engineer? We did select Thrasher today and they signed approval.
I think Thrasher has the most current technology and the, they were willing to work with us to try to get grant money and stuff. I would say the end.
Do you want to make, put that in the form of a motion?
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Motion that the town of Bales, Lake Thrasher, has the engineering company for the project on the western end of town, water and sewer and whatever else would come up within that realm. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, second by John. All those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, say, so ordered. We've got bingo on here.
January the sixth, six o'clock.
Is that a Saturday or something?
Saturday.
It's always the first Saturday, right?
First Saturday.
First Saturday tomorrow.
Yeah, you want to go ahead and say February third, because we won't meet until after that.
January sixth and February fourth.
We'll meet January sixteen.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
And we need every month. Us, we're going to change that, we could do our two month.
Yes.
Alrighty. So with that in mind then, we'll do the same things. We'll do the cards and dollars for the second.
And we'll have the.
And pizza.
Yeah.
Alrighty. So that'll start January sixth. We'll have the ladies put that out in the bills. Next thing is American Job Services, Canal County, Michael Alston. Is he here?
Nope. I was told in October he would definitely be here in December. I'd say he's not here, so.
Okay. Well, the next one, purchase small PA system. I ended up, I printed some of those papers off there down in my house and I didn't bring them up. Looking at a system around one thousand dollars. It is a smaller system. It is a Bluetooth system. So we can connect to a computer, a cellphone or iPhone, anything like that.
I don't know if somebody sent help or what here.
That's what it sounds like three times.
I don't know.
Can you look out the window? Somebody could have fell.
We'll recess here, bud.
Yeah, there is some after home.
Is Randy still there?
Yeah. Yeah, he was in there.
Alrighty, we'll come out and recess. And we'll go ahead and start again. We're on new business and like I said, the purchase small PA, I'll bring that up the next meeting. So we'll get that. The next thing is two thousand point four car show. Is that Nicole or?
Yeah, I brought it up to Melanie and we think that we should do it again. You know, kind of the mall. I know it's way early ahead of time, but would we kind of get thoughts from council about doing it again and what everyone thought about it.
Because we're going to have to get, put on the schedule for the car shows to find out when they're going to be in all night, so.
And usually they start meeting like January, February to get.
Everything.
You know, scheduled out and get this kind of on their big list.
Good idea to have another one.
Yeah, so you all want to go ahead and just.
Yeah, since we don't have the fair every year, if we can have the car show every year, it might be, you know. So what we'll do, the next thing we'll do is we'll get with Tim Wilson and find out when they meet up at, up at New Shores. And up there and see, so that somebody's going to DM the meeting and find out and get on the schedule and everything.
Okay, alright. Any questions from anybody? If not, down the road. Next thing you have on there under new business, Christmas bonuses. We usually do this every year. We do have our supervisors and everything sitting at six hundred, four thousand, four is at five hundred. We do have the part timers and everything. New guys we've got sitting at a hundred, part timers at three hundred. And which would be Elaine and Linda. So it looks like about forty-one hundred dollars is the amount for this year. And don't worry about the two on the right, we took care of those today. At the sanitary board, we have a sanitary board and left side is the town. So someone will put that in the form of a motion that we pay the Christmas bonuses.
So moved.
So moved by John, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Do second, Mel. And all those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aye.
Alright, any opposed, like, say, so ordered.
We'll probably want to look at this next year, probably November.
Yeah.
This year, council here too late. So it's almost going to be an after Christmas bonus.
Well, I talked to him today, we think we can get it in there and get it paid on Friday. Should be able to.
Cool.
So we should be able to get through the system within those two days. And we'll try our best. Approval of invoices, don't think you have anything? No personnel issues that I'm aware of. Police department report, you have that. Don't know if there was any busy one after. Question?
What is it all of a sudden, the state, the federal state bank?
What is it?
This is what, second person has hit the building since they moved in?
Well, the one wasn't the building, it was the sign.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and Nicole's got it on video.
Did you let me lock this up?
Yes, sir. Just pull it, yeah. Thanks, Randy. Yeah, they hit the sign out front, yeah. And I'll tell you later on who that was. It's a frequent fire. Alrighty, no questions there, we'll move on. We'll go on, let me just, items from the mayor. I'm just going to tell you, I had a call from a demolition guy talking about tearing down the old Bell Supermarket building on the corner of ninth and Dupont Avenue. The one that the car wrecked down there and pulled that line loose of the building. So that building may be coming down soon. The demolition of the properties through Bell that we sent in, looks like we're getting a few of them worked through and somewhere I'm told now within probably the next ninety days, we'll have some of those down. I wanted to mention the senior dinner. Thought everything went well there, well attended. I thought we was going to put up more chairs and tables, but I think everything went real good there. Christmas parade, I think we were talking and, you know, it's probably one of the biggest we've had and, you know, seemed like we had a lot of people out on the street and everything else. Thanks to Mark for setting that up and Dave Armstrong, he helped volunteer. And then Mark ended up riding with me in Santa Claus after that, so. But we had a pretty good Christmas parade and then come back up here and had the hot chocolate cookies with salmon and I think it went real well. I think we went through a hundred and one was a hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five, I think it was.
Yeah. Hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and twenty-some treats, which was pretty good. And had a few left that we ended up giving out to local kids and some seniors and everything else. So everything is out back here because I'm afraid it's going to go bad if we didn't get it. I think last week I had a Christmas luncheon for the employees, so Ramona and I served a lunch. We even had the bank robber over here with us and coming to play. But I think it was pretty good. Do you agree?
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, so glad to do that. Passed out my Christmas cookies, so before we leave tonight, you all make sure you get your Christmas cookies. And I've got them in here in my office.
So you can maybe the cooking.
Yeah. So that went well. Again, you know, that was great. I did get an email from Rusty Webb. The opioid checks are just about ready to go. And so I have asked him, you know, hey, pick a date, pick a time. He'll do it as a, you know, council meeting. He'll do it as a just general session of some people around town, whatever we want to do. And he said he'd probably bring a guest, which I'm thinking right now would be our Attorney General Morrison, which is kind of the champion of this whole project and everything there. But we're getting very close to seeing that check and figuring out how much it really is. One more thing I'll mention is the early twenty-five, our landfill over at Canal City is going to close. And so we started looking for a couple of places up here. There are waste management and other companies thinking about doing some prep plans where they'll have the garden services come in and dump, put them in packers and everything, which would be fifty-three foot trailers and then haul it out to a landfill somewhere possibly out of state. So we're trying to work on that now and trying to see whether or not we can get something set up, not only for us, but all the other cities in eastern Canal County. So I was on a phone call with Dave Armstrong and solid waste authority today. So it is something we're going to have to worry about because if we'd have to transport our trash somewhere right now, the three sites is Ashland, Kentucky, Hurricane, West Virginia and Beckley, West Virginia. So it would be a long trip for, you know, our trash trucks and everything. So hopefully we can get something taken care of around here. We're looking at a couple of sites that are within three miles of our, of city. So we're trying to get it done. We already put one into works, about trying to get something done with one person or one outfit around here. And if not, then we'll go to the second one and see what transpires with that one. Items from city attorney, Ray?
You and I talked before the meeting regarding that request by that company to be refunded for previous taxes paid. I just, I forgot to do it. And I'll get it done right away. And you wanted me to check with, around with the surrounding mayors and see what they've done. I'll do that right away and report to the council in January.
Okay.
And I apologize for that.
No problem, thanks, Randy. Alrighty, items from council, we'll start with Mark. I had a resident ask me if we still had the infant swings in the playground. She said last year they had the swings just for infants. I don't know if they're.
Like the smaller ones, kind of like.
Just put their legs through and. She said there wasn't any down there. They're still available.
And there's the one that, ones that got.
There was a couple of them, I think they ended up, they were tore up.
Yeah.
And then we had the one slickie slide down there. The slickie slide is in and I think it's been replaced now down there. That was damaged too, that cracked and everything else. And then the new swings we bought were pretty much just regular swings. And that's something that maybe Nicole and Melanie can park down. Maybe we can look for something and see whether or not. Yes, I told her they were damaged and I didn't know if we still had some laying around.
Now, was she talking about the baby, the actual baby swings or like the handicap swings?
The babies.
Okay.
Then so I. I think it's saying we're just older and just damaged and we just did not get to replace those when we were. We can go back to playgrounds. So we'll, we can check into that maybe because under recreation, I know that we charged that new slickie slide to recreation. We just approved that and be paid now, so. It had finally come in, so. Anything else? That's it. Jacob?
Nothing from me.
Nicole?
That's none of us.
Hello? Melanie?
Elaine actually texted me today and Christie Clark is inquiring about doing a kickboxing and toning class. She said that the fee she would charge depending on what we would charge her. Now, I haven't got to talk to her yet to see. I mean, in the past, we've actually not paid them to do the class and not charged for the class, but give them a free area to do it in, as long as there's no charge. But I don't know if she's willing to do that or if she wants to actually pay. Do you know Elaine?
I just know that she, that she, when she does have them, I think she's had them other places or whatever. She usually charges like five dollars a person, but then it would depend on what she would charge as to how much she had to pay to use the room here at Town Hall.
Yeah, because normally the rule of thumb is if they charge the people, we charge them.
Right, and she, the question is if you even let her do it, what would you charge her, I think, for the room?
Does she want to do it once a week or?
Yeah, I think she's looking at Wednesdays. And she can either do, she doesn't have to have the gym, she could use the room.
Okay, we'll get back.
What's that rumor?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five an hour.
An hour.
Yeah.
So I would probably need to talk to her and see how much.
Probably have an hour, what do you think?
Yeah, she would do an hour.
So maybe twenty-five an hour then roughly? I mean, she's on the hour.
Yeah. I mean, you know, if she's going to do it every week, then we just need to make sure that every Wednesday is not booked by something else, you know what I'm saying? Because I know Lynn's already got some stuff on the books for next year.
Only thing we've got on Wednesdays is usually is the Nazarene church, usually gym, that's it. That's the only thing mainly. I don't think we've had very much else on Wednesday nights.
Not to my knowledge, not when I'm here.
Yeah.
I leave at six.
It's serving.
But you would know because we'd have to have you unlock it or whatever happened, so. So yeah, you want to just.
I'll touch base with her.
Want to touch base with her or have her come to next month's council meeting, just talk to us?
Okay.
And we can fill it out and see what all we want to do.
Okay.
Alright, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, John? Approval for visitors through this council, somebody will make a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Jacob, we have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Nicole, all those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, say, so ordered. Alrighty, anybody have anything? If not, okay. Somebody will make a motion, we, oh, let me tell Mr. Wood. I did check on that one grant and I think we're good for that. So, you know, Mark, maybe you all need to get together to see what, what should be done pretty soon. And I'll probably ask you or Mark and both of you, if you can, to go with me down to Carver and talk to that graphics designer down there.
Okay.
And so probably, you know, January to February sometime. You know, it's got to warm up just a little bit, a little bit and see what we can do at least for the year of here when we come in available. And then, and I think Mel Chemical Company, now Arclan Amines, is still possibly interested in doing the underpass. And then also, we've talked to John and I, when we go to those Arclan meetings, look, working on, Arclan Amines right now is doing their own recycling, so they're coming up and using our bins to fill stuff up. Riverside High School would like to have some bins to do some and we'll have our street guys just to go up and pick them up and everything. Ramona and I went down and bought the new bench at the fire department and picked that up and they actually make trash cans and everything else. Mentioned that to them and they said they would be glad to possibly purchase some of those for us from Arclan.
Oh, wow, that's great.
And so they put the town bell on them, Arclan Amines and then, you know, the school and whatever. So we may see about buying some for the schools and not only Riverside, but John and him's pretty much already worked out where we're doing some of the plastic bottles for Bell Elementary, right? And then I also talked to Tommy Canterbury at Dupont Middle School and he said he'd be interested.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Actually, going back to the parade, this is really the first year. We actually had East Bank Middle School, we had Dupont Middle School and we had Riverside High School and we had the Highlanders from the shrine. So we had actually four bands this time at the Christmas parade. And the council was gracious enough, we've had, we've been paying the bands a hundred dollars for eons and we did raise that, so we got a little extra benefit this time. They were all very appreciative when we handed them the check, so. So that worked out real well, so. So adjourned the meetings, somebody will make a motion?
I have a question though. I just remember right now, just like. What have you decided as far as bands go next year? What's the?
We haven't decided yet. We're going to, we'll have a meeting on that before next year comes, probably, or before, before the time.
And you're still doing the Thursday night, people still be here?
As far as I know, we're still doing the Thursday nights.
Far as I'm concerned, yeah, we'll still do that and probably go back to maybe a couple a month or so or whatever, on the Fridays. And it seemed like it was enjoyed by a lot of people. And I think the Fridays seemed like it was very more than what the Thursday nights were.
Thursday's down the method right now. There might have been twelve here up there just last month.
When I left, seven o'clock, I bet you I couldn't, I bet I didn't count eight people.
It's not good.
I was also in.
Well, Shirley, Shirley kind of mentioned too, since she's the vendor that does the food, that she's really on Thursday night, she's not even making a food cost. So, you know, we're going to have to kind of work on that, you know.
So you think just do Fridays, a couple of Fridays?
Well, the thing of it is, is these guys have done this for years, have they not?
Yeah.
And they've not charged anybody anything. And even though they're more playing, you know what I'm saying, and just having a good time, it's still some people do come. And I'd hate to cut them off and just do Fridays because they have been so gracious. Program. But I don't know that.
But it could be that maybe we just don't do food on those Thursday nights.
Well, that's the problem before, nobody comes if there's no food. So that's, that's the problem on Thursday nights.
Well, she's just going to have to maybe downsize her.
Option, food options. Either that or just bring just a couple of things and not as much and just say, hey, I'll come in and do twenty or twenty-five hot dogs in one hour and that's it, you know. But then I don't know if it's worth their time to do that or not.
I'll tell you what, I'll talk to Shirley and see what we can work out on that. And then I don't know if Lois is going to be able to help any, I know Clarence said he could help, but we're going to have to get some more people involved. And I don't mind helping and I don't mind, you know, being here, but I can't be here every Friday night that they have it. And that's kind of what it boiled down to, usually David.
Or running it for her.
Yeah, and so, you know, there was.
Especially if she got hurt.
Yeah.
Been out.
Yeah, been out for certain and stuff.
You and I, Nicole, Ramona.
Yeah.
You know, been up here and then those couple.
Like, it doesn't matter to me, I just have people asking.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
What's gonna take place, and I'm like, well, you know, we don't know what's gonna take place to happen.
What I'll do is, is I'll talk to Shirley first and see what we can work out with her, and then on Thursday night and on the Friday night, um, she had also mentioned at one time that two times a month was kind of getting hard. Is her husband any better, because I know that was one thing, okay? So, you know, her husband's real bad, and so that's, but let me talk to Shirley and see, because it kind of revolves around the food. I mean, we tried it without the food before on Thursday nights, and we had like one or two people show up.
Oh, really?
Yeah, for a while there, so that's why I went to Shirley and said, can we get some food started on Thursday nights? And then it started picking up a little bit, and then it dropped back off again now.
Yeah.
Um, but let me talk to her and then, uh, can, we'll get it on the agenda for next month.
Sorry, I didn't know.
No, no, that's fine.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, because parents even asked me.
If something comes in my head, I gotta spit it out, like, damn.
Well, we, and we even invited Clarence to the dinner, you know, the Christmas dinner. And Lois was here, but, uh... Alright, we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion, we have a second?
I'll say it.
So moved by Jacob, all those in favor, say five, say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, thank you all very much. Everybody have a Merry Christmas before you leave, say Merry Christmas.